To that meeting, so we felt like, along with the input from Mr. Lilly, that it would be better if we had a meeting from as many chiefs in the association to have some discussion about the 700, 800 radios. Because I did ask the question in Commissioners' Court on that date, "In your opinion, do you believe that the 700, 800 radio system is improving the safety of the citizens of Grimes County?" And the answer to that question was yes. So on the basis of that, I think we probably need to pursue how we can get past any issues that the chiefs may have, the individual fire departments, and along with the counties, so that we're all in sync together. So with that, Mr. Lilly, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point?
Just to remind everybody again, the purpose of this, this is a workshop, and the purpose of a workshop is for everybody, all of the interested parties, to be able to come together and discuss the issues at hand. No actual business is conducted in this workshop, but this is an opportunity for everybody to be heard and everybody to be able to give input on the issue of events before us.
So if you have something to say or want to speak, raise your hand. I'll recognize you, because this is an opportunity for, if you have any issues or concerns, if you have any compliments or complaints, this is, we won't take any, we won't make any decisions today, but we'll certainly take your input, so as we move forward with this, we have good information. Joan, from the association, any words or comments?
The last that we spoke to in the association, one of the comments we made is we're having with the Trump radios in our trucks, is we get a lot of out of range. We can't talk, our service out of range, we leave, it hits and it drops. You don't even have enough time to respond to the other county that's asking for their assistance.
Is that the VHS or the 700, 800?
The 700, 800. VHF were fine. But we were having issues, we will not be able to communicate with other counties that cause in for mutual aid, and you can't go very far and drop and pick up and get a lot of out of range. That was one of the issues that was brought up at our last board meeting.
What area, is there any particular areas where that's happening? Anything that we can pinpoint as far as what the problem may be?
I know it's happening between Richardson and Montgomery Counties.
Richardson and Montgomery, okay.
That was, been seen on the last several calls.
Okay, that's one area. Are any other chiefs aware of any other area?
Well, Anderson had views on ours, because our handhelds, we only have chargers for, we don't have our truck radio, so we can't save our truck.
Okay, Anderson, no chargers. Dead zones, Richards.
Richards going into the runway, and we can't even leave out the station. It'll jump and drop. I mean, you can't even get out the county to respond, not even the county.
Okay. So Joan, this is all the time that's happening when you go to Montgomery County?
Yeah, we're not getting anywhere. It don't matter if as far as base travel, all the way to Bethel Road, it varies, you can't respond.
Does it work on handheld?
That's the truck radio.
From Beeb Cobb, Mr. Gilbert is here.
So first, I've heard of that specific issue. If you have issues like that, my job is to make sure that your radios work. So if you have an issue like that, we could investigate the radio itself, because I had heard a vague story from Dave Lilly that there was an issue in the Richards area, and I drove the entire area extensively the week after I heard that, and just with a handheld radio, I had no problems whatsoever. So in this situation, I would investigate the radios specifically. Maybe the antenna wasn't put on correctly, or maybe the transmitter's just not strong enough. I mean, you know, those things can be addressed, but I have to know about it.
Court's the chief out of Richard, Court?
Yes, sir. My concern is, I want the radio programmed the way I want it programmed. It's kind of like buying a car and saying, hey, you only got AM, you only got AM radio today? I want the radio programmed the way I want it programmed. That's one of my bigger concerns.
Okay, and I'm gonna, so I'm gonna, because a lot of the technical that y'all are talking about, I'm ignorant to it. So when you talk about the programming specifically, what do, you might know what he means, but what do you mean, Court?
I want the channels, I want up front and not 10, 15 back. I cannot drive and flip a radio 15, 20 channels down the line.
Okay.
I want the, I mean, I'm assuming it's gonna be different for everybody, because like, B-Dies and Iola's gonna want Madisonville up front. They don't want Madisonville down at J and K and Z and Q. They want Madisonville at B or C, because that's where they mostly mutual aid with. I mostly mutual aid with Montgomery County. I want them right there at my fingertips. I don't want to go to it right down the road before I can get to them.
Is that something we can accommodate?
Yes. Again, this is a, this is a-
And I'm sorry, for those that might not know you, would you introduce yourself to the other chiefs?
So, I'm Thomas Gilbert, I'm the radio system manager for the VHS 700 system.
Thank you, that's all right.
Again, that's a, that's a situation where, yes, I could possibly get there. And it makes perfect sense. However, the programming list was approved by Joan Tier prior to the radios being given out.
Now, we were told this was what we had to have.
This was, it was-
Okay, no talking back and forth, let's keep it one at a time.
Respectfully, I sent, I have an email. In fact, I brought all my documentation with me with our correspondence. The email I sent was, this is a draft list. And then, in a subsequent email, you said, that will work for now, if we need to change anything we can. And I never heard another word after that. In fact, subsequent to that, when I was getting ready to program your mobile radios, I asked specifically, do you want me to copy the mobiles to match the portables? And you said, yes, that will work. So I think that, I think what's happened is there's been some miscommunication, some misinformation. My job here is to make sure that your radios function the way you need them to function. I mean, that's the most basic answer I can give.
And what I hear you saying, though, it is doable to, if Richards needs a different programming than, say, Iola or any of the other stations, we can do that?
Absolutely.
By station? Okay.
Or, it sounds like maybe more simply, you know, by, like Chief Norwood was saying, put the primary channels on the front end rather than the back end, so that they're easier to find. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, David. Said it the way I want it said, and I want my radio programmed the way I want it programmed. For example, because, you know, he mutual aids Montgomery County a lot. So he wants, he wants their channels up in the front and not in the back, where we mutual aid Madison County and Walker County a lot. So I'd want those channels in the front and not way in the back.
Okay.
And then I go with Madison County and Razzles. I'd want those in front. I don't need Montgomery County at the front.
Right.
Okay, Joan?
I make a comment.
Sure.
Okay, anything I say is approved for me is because of the board has decided, not me personally. That's what we said would work for now. So which, that for now was put in there. So just so you know, it was-
Right.
They caught the front of rope of the board, and I was the spokesman.
Right, and I get that, and I realize that for now has ended. But I think for now ended a while back, and I just never heard about it.
Right, because we're just now getting, they're getting familiar with the radios, they're getting installed, starting to use them, and find out what's not working.
Right, and I, I mean, like I said, I have absolutely no trouble whatsoever rearranging everything that's in the radios to meet each department. That's, that's not an issue at all. It's a, it's a matter of me coming out there and-
Because as far as B-Dies was concerned, we don't even, we don't even have the truck used. All we have are the handhelds. We quit using our handhelds, because we key up on it, we make it out, we may not. So we got to the point where we just quit using them.
Okay.
Right, and I talked to what you, what's your, yeah, talked to. We're, you know, we'll have the site of B-Dies on the near, in the next couple of months, and then that will no longer be an issue for you. We got the tower built, it's been muddy, it's been nasty forever, so we'll have that installed in the next few months, and then that, that signal thing will be all right for you.
So they should be allowed to clear by then?
Absolutely.
Well, part of the issue is, several of the departments, we do not have the radios.
Right, the mobiles.
The mobiles are not, they came out and they did everything they needed to do to see what they were gonna need to mount, and then, nothing.
Well, to explain what happened with that, so we clarify on that issue. As the judge mentioned at the beginning here, this all transpired as a result of, as we were moving forward and starting the installations. When I first came to you guys last summer and said that we would take care of the cost of installation, you know, as some of the chiefs that were here that day at the Commissioners' Court understand, I overstepped on that. It's not saying that the Commissioners or the county as a whole would not have approved that, it's just that the way I went about it was wrong, okay? With that, just set that upfront. But with that being said, we were committed, we had already committed expense-wise to four departments by the time this arose, to pay for the installation that had already been done. And the Commissioners' Court instructed me that, you know, it's not that we're not gonna do the remainder, but they wanted to have this workshop first to work out all these issues before we go forward with the remaining installations. Is that pretty much how, did I-
Well, that's fair, because if there was a consensus that the chiefs were not going to want the units in their trucks, there's no sense in us spending an additional $25,000 or $30,000 to install into their trucks.
Now, I did go to your chiefs meeting following that Commissioners' Court, and I polled the remaining departments and all of the chiefs that were there in attendance that night, said that you guys still want the mobiles. If I understand, that's still what your desire is, is to go forward with it?
We're gonna go forward with the system. Law's rule, make it work.
No, and that, Chief, that's understandable.
But just like I had an observation the other day, our VHS now is what's crap. We can't hear nothing. Ours is bad.
Ours too.
Late pages, out for test pages, it's nothing but static. What test page?
Judge, before your time, we had agreed to this Trump system as long as our VHF would be improved.
Well, did we not improve the system?
It's going downhill.
Well, no, no, no. It might be going down, but was it not improved? Wasn't there an investment? What was the, what was done on that, Mr. Lilly?
We basically turned our, what they were originally was receivers, which they did not have as much of a reach for the signal, the ability to transmit in a broader sense or wider sense in the county. We turned them into full-blown repeaters on both the north and south side.
Okay. So, Court, something was done to it, and I think it was, from what I understand, it was better at one time?
Just the last three weeks.
It's just the last three weeks it's gone down?
I could be at the station there-
Do we have, do we have any idea why that is happening?
I called him about last week, and I had to let dispatch know every night to do the test, when they do the test pages, there's nothing but static. We get our tones, and if you can't hear the voice, we had a call the other day. And I had to call to see what it was, because all we heard was shh.
And the voices you can't hear coming out of the 911 dispatch and the sheriff's office. Chief Green, you have any ideas or thoughts or knowledge?
This is the first time I heard of it.
Okay.
I never called.
I mean, I know we've been doing test pages, and I know we've been doing test pages just for, separate test pages for Todd Mission over the last two weeks, kind of to address the concern they had with the test pages. And last conversation, I guess, since we separated them out from the test hall, is, theirs have been working fine all the way down to Todd Mission. So it's just, you know, it could be a timing issue in the console or something. I know they're coming up tomorrow, matter of fact.
Who's they?
Northwest Radio, Northwest Communications.
Okay.
It's coming up tomorrow to look at the timing issue that was with Todd Mission. We can do test pages.
We need to do a broader one.
Yeah, I know, it was like last Thursday, we had a call, they're too big.
You know, those, but once again, though, there's a lot of external factors beyond that system's control that can dictate on these pagers and the radio systems. I mean, you can go anywhere from atmospheric conditions, trees. If you've got a lot of fog and dew, the radios are gonna be different that day until it lifts and clears up. You know, that's some of the limitations that you have with a VHF system. So every day, it could be, it could not necessarily be the equipment itself.
It could just be the weather.
The transmission that's going out from the tower, what all's happening in between before it gets to that receiving point could be an issue. Now, it could be an issue with the pagers, you know.
Are you guys having any trouble talking to each other on VHF? Is it just what's coming in from dispatch? Yes, Chief?
We are.
Okay. Well, that's a separate thing, and I wanted to, I think I talked about this. I got that.
Saturday, Saturday evening, I was standing 10 foot from one of my guys, and I could-
And where were you at?
We were on 1696 East.
Okay. When I went to Northwest Communication, I took some of your radios about a month ago down to Northwest Communications and had them check them over, and they said they're all working, you know, fine, there's no problems with them. The, they ran me a propagation map. I don't have a copy of it here, but in short, there's two areas that show that they're still, you know, lacking in VHF. One is a very clear, almost a perfect white square corner, which is B-Dies area. You know, it's all, most of the county shows green, but it's white up there. And then there's a fairly large area, not as bad, but still a fairly large area of white showing down around Todd Mission. So, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, we now know, even after we turned our tower system at the north side into a full repeater, I was hoping that would help address some of those issues. It's still not, those, the terrain and everything is such that it's not getting there. So what I'm looking at is to try and find some way to try and maybe add something onto our tower in B-Dies, trying to address that, to try and finally fix that issue.
When you get a couple miles away with a handheld, you're not gonna communicate if you're trying to hit repeaters.
Right.
Because it just doesn't have the range, because when you go to talk, it's not talking to radio to radio when you're on a repeated channel. It's talking back to the tower and then back to the radio. So, yeah, I could be 10 feet to funny you, but it's gotta go to the tower and come back.
Now, Todd, I know when this started, what started, we start, you start hearing, like, somebody keying up on the mic, and you had several of them, and even dispatch would come back and say, fire here with traffic. Well, nobody was responding, because nobody was, we don't think nobody was keying up on the mic. And that's when it started the static.
Yeah, that started about 3:30 in the morning about two weeks ago.
Yeah. Has it changed?
No, it's, I don't get no voice on my pagers at all, or handhelds, or static.
Because after you called me about that issue, Chief, I called dispatch, and I talked to the one young man, I don't know his name there, but he's one of the dispatchers there. He said that he was aware of that, and he said that when they first sent out the page, he said it sounded kind of odd, and I think, Chief, you said the same thing, it sounded kind of wonky or something. And then when he went ahead to repage, and I said, did everybody respond to the repage? He said, yes, I got full response from all the fire departments on the repage. But I've noticed also, in recent days, when I'm monitoring, I monitor both the 700 and the VHF. I've noticed that the VHF is, sometimes it's coming through scratchy. I mean, I can hear and I can understand what you guys are saying, but it's coming through scratchy. So one of the things I'm gonna ask Northwest to do is also go and check our tower sites, make sure that they're functioning properly.
Yeah, but I've noticed the last two weeks or so that dispatch would come on the radio and say, unit with traffic, but nobody said anything. But you hear this, this static coming over the airwaves.
I hear this break.
You hear the break, it sounds like somebody's keying up their mic. But they're not. I mean, I don't know if they are or not, but nobody's saying anything.
And that couldn't be somebody who's pushing on their mic button by mistake. It used to happen sometimes.
It don't happen every five minutes all night long.
Right, I agree.
It could be just, and it could be something else, atmospheric causing it, we don't know.
But it don't happen regularly on every three minutes all night long. Somebody would get tired of mashing the mic after a while.
They'd go to sleep.
Go to sleep, anyway.
At least go to sleep with a finger on the button or something.
But chiefs, do y'all have any, any suggestions or ideas? Because, again, I'm not the technical expert. I don't know if any of the Commissioners are looking, I don't think so.
I'm kind of confused, and I'm gonna say so. Not that I'm totally confused, but the reason that I understood the meeting was about was to confirm with you all if we go ahead with the installation of the radios in all of the trucks, were you all going to be willing to take care of the maintenance and those issues like that? That's what we were really trying to find out from the fire.
We did find the maintenance.
Could I interject something, Commissioner?
Oh, okay, uh-huh, go ahead.
One of the things that I discussed way back when, whenever I came over here to Anderson that one night, we was going over everything, the question of maintenance came up. And one of the things I said was that if there's, if something breaks, if something fails, you know, a handheld or mobile, whatever, if I have the parts in my office to fix it, I'll fix it. I've done several of Chief Green's radios that, you know, he's brought me. As long as I have the parts, I'll fix them. At the end of the day, there, in my opinion, has to come a point where, as the recipient, not saying that you, that you have to do this, but I think, in my opinion, if you're gonna receive $100,000 worth of radio equipment, and it's, you know, we hand you the keys of this multi-million dollar radio system, you know, if there comes a point where you gotta spend a hundred bucks on battery or replacing antenna, I mean, I don't know where that line is between y'all, and that's not my business, but I would think that there comes a point where the department would just say, okay, I'm gonna buy a battery, or whatever. The radios, they're probably gonna last a long time. And the radios are, you know, while Motorola's not making them anymore, there are literally hundreds of suppliers across the country that still sell brand new batteries, belt clips, antennas, chargers, microphones, everything for those radios. So it's not, it's not a huge deal when you talk about a $25 antenna or a $100 battery here and there versus the capital expense of what was, what it would cost to buy that system if you had to buy it yourself. You know, that being said, I don't know the finances of the fire departments. Like I said, it's none of my business. My job is just to make sure that their system works, and, but that's, that's my opinion. And like I said, as long as I have the parts, I'll fix them as long as I can. And, you know, they didn't cost me anything, you know, it didn't cost them anything.
All right. And, and I wanted to back up to the beginning. When this came to light, that we were installing radios in the volunteer fire department's truck, the Commissioners' Court as a whole had no knowledge that y'all were receiving radios to put in the trucks. What we had talked about or had heard about was handheld standalone radios. It kind of presented a problem when we start putting them in the trucks, because we never allocated money in the budget, first of all, to have that done. The money that was in the budget was for the remaining money for the B-Dies tower, for the VHS improvement to the repeaters. So it created a problem, because we didn't know that it was going into the volunteer fire department's truck. So that's why we had to put stop to it, to get some questions answered as to where we are, because maybe these young ladies could shine a little light on it. But we were talking, we understood handheld radios. So when we start seeing the bills coming in for these radios being installed in the truck, then we had to ask the question. We had to stop and reassess things. So that's where we are, and we're trying to understand how this is all gonna play out and work together, and be an improvement and an enhancement to you all and to the county as a whole when we can work through this issue. So the question was still remaining, we still got departments that hadn't been installed, and when we asked that question, we were being told, well, we may just bring the radios back if we have to take care of maintenance. But we want to keep in mind, as he explained, this was radios donated to Grimes County, and then they went out to the volunteer fire departments and the sheriff department. And it's, it's all in an effort to make sure that everybody's able to communicate with everybody, that the county as a whole is safer, because you have more than one way. If your VHS is out perhaps, I don't, I don't know all the workings of it. But for us, as a Commissioners' Court, we had to reassess what we're doing. We didn't want to move forward, we're putting them in trucks, and you don't want them in your trucks. And then we had to work out the issue of where did the money come from to pay for it, because it was never discussed at Commissioners' Court. And I want to make that clear, that we never heard about the trucks until that particular point. So with that being said, I'd like to say, our county attorney is here. We've talked about how do we move forward, move forward with this. And that's really why we wanted to know from you all. How many departments are remaining?
Four.
Four?
There's B-Dies, Iola, Anderson, and Todd Mission.
And then we still owe for two that's already been installed.
I believe all the bills that we already received have been paid.
Those have all been paid.
They have all been paid, okay.
So to identify maintenance, because if maintenance is batteries and antennas, that's one thing, but if it's the monthly maintenance subscription fee-
No, that's where I was gonna go next.
That's where our topic is.
Is that where the issue is?
Buy a battery, but we can't even buy $30 a month per radio.
No, no, we-
Go ahead.
Keep explaining.
Since the point Mr. Gilbert issued the radios to Grimes County, we've been paying the maintenance fee, or it's gonna be billed to the county.
Monthly service.
And, and, subscription for service for 72 radios, 72 radios at $23.68 for 1819?
For 1819, that's great. For 1920, as long as the budget, as long as the proposed budget gets approved, that number comes down to about $17 and some change.
So next year, it'll drop some, because there were additional radios added. So there are 72 radios that have been issued to the fire departments. At $23.68 a piece, comes to a total of $17,0495 per month. Multiply that times 12, we're looking at $20,459 and some change.
Now you understand why the fact, we're worried about that definition of maintenance cost.
Okay, all right, well, let me clarify. That bill is now coming to Grimes County. And that's why we needed to stop a minute and reassess this and see-
Correct.
Where we are, because we're just getting the understanding of the whole picture also.
And you're paying, and y'all been paying for radios that are not installed and not operational?
But once we took possession of them, but we had to understand it.
Yeah.
Okay, we had to get that understanding. We hadn't gotten that understanding, because it hadn't been brought up to Commissioners' Court as a whole. So that's where we are.
Commissioner, can I add a little more clarification? To kind of add to what you've discussed or what you've explained? Again, so that we understand what we're talking about, that fee that the county pays per radio, it's, Thomas, what is the actual literal definition or the term for that? I keep calling it a membership fee. What is-
Some people call it a membership fee. It's a, it's a, what that money does is it pays for the maintenance of the infrastructure, the tower sites, the repeaters, you know, everything related to the system itself. And then, so yes, there are two definitions, there are two categories of maintenance. So there's infrastructure maintenance, which is what the county's paying for on y'all's behalf. And then there's the device maintenance, which would be batteries, antennas, power cords, all that stuff, which would be y'all's.
That's understandable. And that's understandable, yes, we were thinking.
But in our, in our previous Commissioners' meeting, and I'm sorry, Chief Vickers is not here at court, you were there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the comment was, when it comes to replacing batteries and all of that, we're not paying for any maintenance. And if we are, then we're willing to take the batteries, I mean, we're willing to take the radios now and put them on your desk, as he's addressing me. Am I right or wrong?
That's what was said. We did not know what maintenance was, were you wanting us to pay for the monthly fee with that? So we didn't know what maintenance was.
Well, then that, then that was an absolute misunderstanding, because it was-
Miscommunication.
It was never, if it's maintenance of the infrastructure, it's really, in my mind, our minds, it was the individual radio subscriptions. It's like you have in cable. You pay your monthly fee, and that takes care of whatever the company's costs are. The subscription per radio was, was a bill that the county was willing to absorb in its budgeting process. However, we're not willing to continue down that road if you folks aren't gonna use radios. Now, and granted, if you don't have them in your vehicles, that's another issue that we have to deal with. But the idea, and not from my perspective, that you departments and your employees of your departments are gonna have to have some responsibility to take care of the radios, treat them like you own them, and in a sense you do, but just because they're abused or not taken care of, it shouldn't be the responsibility of the county to replace antennas, belt clips, batteries, and things of that sort. So, you know, we're trying to work on this together, but- but we hit kind of immediate wall on that one commissioners' court meeting. And I appreciate Commissioner Walker, you helping to clarify.
Trying to understand too.
You bet.
Maintenance, when y'all say maintenance, that goes a long ways.
Well, I thought, I was considering next subscription, you know, the twenty-three.
We're dealing with semantics here, you know.
Okay, so it's not, just so everybody, it's not any different than what we pay for our VHF. We pay for antennas, we pay for batteries, we pay for belt clips, replacement if something happens to it. So that's basically what y'all call maintenance for the seven, eight hundred. We're basically paying the same thing we're doing for a VHF. We're doing our typically maintenance of...
I would say that's a fair statement.
We're good with that. So basically, just, just for y'all's benefit, 'cause I wanna make sure that there, there's no doubt, right? When we all leave here, we all know what's going on. The, the amount that the county pays every year is, it's literally never gonna be the same. Because what we do is we take, we figure out how much it's gonna cost to maintain the system for this next fiscal year. We add up everybody's radio account. This is how many radios are on the system. This is what it's gonna cost. We divide that number by that number, that's an even amount. So this year our cost went down, the number of radios on the system went up, so the cost per device came down. It, it's, it's trending downward. Since I took over, it's, it's come down about thirteen dollars a month per radio. I can't promise that it's always gonna trend down, but that's how it's been since, since I've been there.
Sure.
But that, that number just takes care of the system, isn't it?
Okay, now I have another question. Say, if our department gets a new truck, are we gonna have to take that seven, eight hundred out of another truck to put in that truck?
Well, that's a good question.
You mean to swap out, Chief, or get a new one in addition to the old?
If we had a vehicle to the fleet.
If we get a radio in that vehicle.
Right. So, as it stands today, my answer for that question as it stands today is, I have radios in my office that I can use. However, that, I mean, so where these radios came from? Radios you guys got came from Brazos County, mostly from Brazos County Sheriff's Department. When they upgraded their system, I was able to get them to transfer all that equipment to CAG. And then we, I rehabbed them and got them ready to go back out and get you guys up and running. I, I have another group that was transferred to me by the City of Bryan. And so right now, I could accommodate that. However, as time goes on, if there's, if I'm replacing radios that break, or we find that maybe Madison County might wanna get on the system, maybe they wanna take advantage of some of that, that equipment. So over time, my, my numbers are gonna, are gonna drop. As long as I have one to give, when that, if that situation comes up, I'm more than happy to give.
But then the question comes back around. If I, you know, if I had a new vehicle to my fleet and put another radio into it, an additional vehicle to my fleet, who's gonna pay that subscription fee?
All of it should come before commissioners' court, okay? That's the problem we had. It didn't come before commissioners' court to be put in trucks in the first place.
Well, and I understand...
And there's a cost to each truck that we're doing, so...
Well, I'm not even talking about the installation cost. I'm talking about the twenty-three dollar per month subscription fee, you know?
Same thing. It would all need to come so that we can all stay on the same page.
Right.
I would suggest that it all come to commissioners' court.
But, you know, I guess, and that, that's the question. One of the questions we have, we have on this as we improve our fleets and add vehicles into them.
Well, right now, we've got, what, seventy-two radios?
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-two. So that's the number that we're working off of right now. Any change in that number, like Commissioner Walker said, that, we need to discuss that. I'm not saying it won't happen, we just need to know that, we need to discuss that.
Before asking for another radio, we get to commissioners' court, so we're adding a truck to our fleet. We would like the county to address us adding another truck radio to the system. Just to keep a heads up.
Yes.
That's not really a big deal, though.
Would we, would we come to y'all, or do we go to David? Would David come to y'all?
David would be your contact, and then David, he'd get it on the agenda in a timely fashion.
Yeah, and just trying to get...
That's fair.
We're trying to get communication fixed.
There's nothing wrong.
In more ways than one.
Let them be to good understanding.
And I think on, on this, on this VHS system, for, I guess, those that can get it fixed, or at least look into it, this isn't the time and place. I mean, today it is, but in the normal realm, that really needs to, I guess, David, it needs to go to, to David Lilly as our emergency management coordinator. And then David can talk with the sheriff. I mean, I'm not trying to get this in a daisy chain of eight or ten people, but if you, if you folks know, call Lilly. And if it's off-shift or you can't, then call dispatch, and Chief Green's gonna be in tune to that. But between one or the other, we're gonna find out you have a problem, and, and we won't be hearing, well, it's been two weeks, and we can't even hear, hear anything and use the radios. That's, that's not fair to you guys, and certainly not fair to our citizens.
What's supposed to happen if a department hasn't issued the radio, they're having problems, they're supposed to address the board, send us an email. We take the email and we send it to Todd. That way there's a direct communication. And it's no problem copying, copying David, that's not a problem. But if there's any problem within the fire departments, they're supposed to send a problem to the board, and we send it straight to Todd. That way he doesn't get everything inundated from certain, if it might be something that we can handle, like, oh, there's a problem, you know, it's something you're needing, we don't have to bother dispatch. We don't have to bother Todd about it. So if they keep it straight coming to the board, the board straight goes to Todd, and we can copy David.
In this last instance, did that come to the board? Why not?
That's the fire department's way it didn't come.
Okay.
Ain't had time to sit down and write up...
So there's a break in communications, okay? That's the whole thing, we're breaking...
So we got a procedure, we're just not following the procedure. All right. So Chief Green, are you okay with getting it from the association?
I'm fine if they do it that way. I know a bunch of them call me directly, and I'll take care of that.
Okay. When you do send an email, I would ask that you copy David Lilly on that, just as kind of a backup and a support. Plus, he, he can come talk to us. Okay.
And one more question, which, backing up here. We talked about possibly reprogramming individual fire departments' radios for what they need, truck radios to what they need.
Again, I can't answer that.
I know, I know that's what you're talking about. Hey, there's gonna be a cost to that, I'm sure. There's not? Okay, that's what I want to address.
We're already paying them big bucks, so we shouldn't have to pay more.
I just wanted to get that out and addressed.
No, that's, and that's the thing. Because, you know, I, I work for the CAG, I'm the system manager for BBWAX. I, I'm doing programming for Washington County, for Brennan, A&amp;M University. Folks that don't have their own radio, people like City of Bryan, College Station, Brazos County, all have their own radio guy. But the others don't. So in that, in those situations, to save them the cost of going to a vendor and doing, you know, having to coordinate all that and pay them to do it, because it's my system, I just, I just can program it.
So there's not a possibility, like, I know a VHF, we have software on our laptops. We can self-reprogram our VHF. That's not something we can do with seven, eight hundred?
No, because it requires advanced system keys. And we, we don't, we don't generally give those out. We keep them to the, we keep them limited to the system owners, the system managers.
Okay. Yes, sir. Chief?
I may be opening up a can of worms, but I'm gonna do it anyway.
Well, if it's not on the agenda, I won't let you, but go ahead.
Okay. And this is a question for Chief Green. When, when dispatch shuts down a channel, okay, because of security or they're in pursuit or whatever, the fire departments cannot get through to dispatch. Can we use the seven hundred?
We don't shut down y'all's channel.
I'm sorry?
We don't shut down y'all's channel for that. If, if we're having a pursuit on our channel, our channel will shut down.
They still monitor?
They still monitor.
Okay. Well, I'm just, you know, utilizing the seven hundred radio. If for some reason we can't get through a VHF, can we come through with the seven hundred?
On the fire dispatch talk?
Yes. Yes, and sort of monitoring...
We have both y'all's channels on the console and both from the remote.
Then what, is that big of a hand? Thank you. Because it is critical. I mean, 'cause we never, I mean, if we're on a structured plan, we get a mayday, we need to get to dispatch.
Sure.
And when they shut it down, it's not shut down, I'm like, talk, shut down for emergency traffic company. So if you have emergency traffic, for all means, talk.
Let their own shut down.
All the other people are saying, hey, I'm gonna be in route, I'm stopping at a store, and yeah. All that traffic we're taking off. We won't own any of the traffic, unless there's another emergency car stop.
So, so that I'm understanding, within the next couple months, where I'll rebrush our bills in service, I need to email you, Joe?
No, if you're bringing any brush truck, you need to email David. What we're talking about is problems. Problems come to association. If you have dispatch problems, now you can send it to us, that's fine, and copy us and copy David. And send it to David. It's just, when you're, once David, you have a commissioners' court put on the agenda to add something else to your, if they approve it or not.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question still remaining. And I asked our auditor and our county attorney, do we need to, now that we have their okay, do we have to have that in writing?
Have to is a strong word. Should we, I think is the question.
Well, should we?
I don't know when the contracts are coming up, but it sounds like all we're adding is device maintenance is on the department, system maintenance is on the county. Shouldn't be that difficult a change to make. It would be nice to make it now, but I don't know how far away we are from the annual new contract.
We didn't sign until September, was that...
Yeah, but we end up sending our contract in by July. Is going to want to send it in to make sure there's no differences within the county. And we're in the process of working on our new contract and tweaking it. So, to me, I think we could wait till we do our new contract and put it in there. Because we never put in that maintenance was covered by us on VHF.
Right.
An assumption, I know what assumption is.
Just clarification. The question is, when is it best to make it clear? And if we're, they're in the process of tinkering with the agreement anyway. I, I, I think we have an understanding tonight about who's gonna pay what, but there could still be some, whatever, catastrophe.
Well, I, I just asked that question 'cause all, all of the departments are not here. If I'm, I don't see Chief Vickers, and there may...
That's the only question.
Why, how...
Well, we'll put the burden on the associations back to communicate.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make clarification whether, because if they see this come back again on the agenda, which it may or may not, if you, if we're gonna wait till then. But it's just to let them know that we still have to bring this before commissioners' court 'cause there's a budget amendment that has to happen to cover the cost of paying for all of this additional services. So it's gonna come up on an agenda, but I just want to give you fair warning that you'll see that because we, we do have to take care of those subscriptions and the installation of them.
We're working on workshop, waiting on the contract to come out.
Sure.
Y'all can get that contract ready before July.
Yeah, we're trying to get...
Chief, for money. So, I'm on the committee with Morrison and with, with Court. So the key words here are device and maintenance is what we're looking for.
Device and system.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, maintenance, and device. Why I put even maintenance in it, 'cause it's really not a maintenance fee, it's a subscription fee, right, Thomas? I mean, is that what they call it?
System subscription.
It's called, it's called a subscriber fee.
Subscriber fee. That's what it's called. That way there's no confusion.
Device maintenance and subscriber fee.
Okay.
We will work with those terms. Does that sound good with you?
Did ever chief get an opportunity to speak what might they have on their mind?
The one, the other issue that the chiefs, the chiefs are concerned about is, the fact is, and it goes back to what you've already alluded to, these radios, especially the handhelds, I mean, they're old units. And as long as there's parts on the shelves, you can get replacement parts. But they're, you know...
There are...
They're out of date, they're not, they don't, Motorola, they didn't even maintain them anymore.
Motorola offers limited support right now, that ends in twenty twenty-one. Well, twenty nineteen for one version and twenty twenty-one for a different version, based on when they canceled production on those different models. But Motorola literally made millions of those radios. And the third-party vendors are everywhere that are buying. They buy radios at surplus auction and use them to repair other radios. When Motorola, generally when Motorola announces a product cancellation, a lot of those repair shops will flood Motorola parts stores, and they'll stock up parts because they know those radios are gonna survive for a long time. They can make their money. They may not make it right now, but five years from now, they're gonna start making money hand over fist because there's, there's gonna be a bigger demand for it. I would say, conservatively, a lot of your equipment will probably live more than five years, even, you know, bouncing around in partra from today. Obviously, you know, some people take better care than others, and, you know, those folks are... Everybody has one, right? Somebody that is really hard on equipment, somebody that's really gentle on equipment. So, but the, the actual lifespan is, is gonna be different for each device. But I wouldn't have put them back out on the street if I wasn't confident in them.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Gilbert, for coming back out to Grimes County to help explain. I'm glad you were here so that you could speak to them directly. And we wanna thank you all too for coming and helping us work through this issue.
You bet.
And you as well.
Thank you.
John C. Lawyer, can you give us some info on...
We're addressing his counselor. Go ahead.
Can you give us some verbiage of what you're thinking about going into the contract on these radios so we can have a starting point on where to start?
On this particular issue, you mean? Yeah, I, I just used, I heard people say subscriber's fee. It's gonna be the county's and device maintenance. We've seen over time, as you know, Court, we'll put something in there. It'll take the next year to figure out it wasn't as clear as we want it to be.
Right.
We're just gonna try, that's called refining a contract. That's what we're gonna do, is refine it. And I think we start there. I just said system maintenance, 'cause apparently there was some confusion about which maintenance. I, I didn't know there was confusion. And if we need to split up which maintenance, fine. If we don't wanna call it maintenance, I don't care. I don't care what we call it. But, end of the day, I think those are the two issues. We attack it that way, and we refine it over time.
I think if, when you're doing this, if you call what the county's gonna pay, the subscriber fee, that'll, that'll be clear.
Come y'all to be clear, it's just gonna be...
I think there's one, there might be one other, there's probably more than one. But there's one other issue that hasn't been discussed, and that's buying new radios. So...
Well, if you got a five-year supply, we don't wanna bring that up tonight.
At some point, my supply, at some point, my supply is gonna be gone. My office will someday be cleared, and, and at least I hope so. So, at some point, you know, there's AFG grants, there's Hummer School grants, there's all kinds of grants out there. But also, you need to understand that you're not required to buy a Motorola radio. The system is built on an open standard for public safety communications that Harris, Tate, Midland, Kenwood, lots of people make radios that'll work on it, and they're a lot less expensive than Motorola. Now, I've tested some of them, and the adage that you get what you pay for is sometimes true. Sometimes there's actually, you know, really stout stuff out there that's a lot less expensive. So, don't look at the price tag of what those radios were, you know, were brand-new. Like, a lot of your radios were five grand, brand-new, thirty-five hundred, five grand. Don't look at that price and think, oh my God, I'll never be able to buy a new radio because there are a ton of radios out there that are available that are not near to that expensive that will still do what you need them to do on, on the system, they're compatible.
Maybe in five years, Brian will go ahead and give theirs up again, right?
Yeah, the ones that just...
We might play that game one more time.
That's right.
So, I just wanna ask this question while we're talking about it. To, to be clear, Mr. Lilly, we're going to, from what we look like, we got the question answered for the installation of the remaining trucks that you presented, okay? If any additional come up, then you need to, it all has to come to commissioners' court.
Any, any changes to the amount of radios that we pay for as a county will come before commissioners' court, before we... commissioners' court, before we purchase or before those radios are procured, whether they're procured free from Thomas, or we, our department, whatever, any new radios that are added to that, that changes the amount that the county pays for on that, that fee, the monthly fee, will come before commissioners' court, before it actually takes place.
All right, thank you.
At the beginning of the year, we need to aggregate inventory of our department of handhelds and mobiles.
Yes, just so y'all understand that process, we don't, we don't activate a radio and then immediately start billing for that radio. When we, when we set our FY budget, like right now, we're working on the FY nineteen twenty budget, what happens is January, February, every year, we basically verify everybody's counts or their inventory, make sure that they, the radios they have are still there, 'cause, you know, occasionally people lose a radio and don't realize it. So, we make sure they're still there, and if the count changes, then, okay, that's the number we go with, whether it's plus or minus. So, if you, if you get a new truck in two months, you're not gonna be paying the bill on that radio until the next budget cycle. We're not, we don't get down into the minutia and go back and do budget amendments every month, because somebody bought a new radio. We, we do that one year at a time.
But with that being said, don't have a hundred radios sitting in the wing and waiting for the budget to end, dump a hundred radios on, 'cause then they're gonna catch and call foul.
Yeah, well, sure.
But, and if, and if there is a radio off, so if y'all taking the radio down, you can take it off the system real quick, to get to somebody's wrong hands, you can turn it into a trick.
Yes, that is one of the nice things about this system, is that if you lose a radio, if you send me an email or call me and say, man, I lost this radio, as long as you can tell me the serial number, which kinda goes, that falls on y'all to keep up with inventory and who has what, but as long as you can give me the serial number, I can make that radio completely inoperable if somebody turns it off.
If somebody's queuing every five minutes, you know...
That is another maintenance, 'cause we can pull the ID number, so it should be coming across the dispatch, and then we can call him and tell him to shut it off.
And Chief, the best way to do that, I think, again, is to use me as your point of contact on that, as you all know, I've already inventoried the radios that you do have, both handheld and mobile, and I have all the serial numbers that are assigned to each department. So, all you gotta do is let me know, make one phone call, or I prefer an email, but a phone call, I'll make a note of it, and I'll note it by Thomas and say, shut that radio off. Real simple.
And with that, I think the business of the meeting is concluded, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
Sir?
Move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
That's it.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox and a second by Commissioner Walker to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. The opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.
Thank you.